Be boring.
Okay, we'd like to call the order, the study meeting in the West Valley. September tenth, twenty twenty four at five thirty P M in the public purpose room, West Valley City Hall. Uh, we are joined electronically by Mayor Lang and Councilmember Harmon. All other members of the council are present. We're also joined but with by Mr. Efo Peely, our city manager, and Mr. Paul Kammick, our city recorder. Turn the minutes of last meeting over to the council.
For approval of those minutes. Second.
It's been moved to second at all in favor. We say aye.
Aye.
Sounding unanimous. Uh, the agenda for our regular meeting tonight, any changes tonight?
No.
No. Okay, any questions from the council on our regular meeting? They have two public hearings. Application Z T eight twenty twenty four. And application Z seven twenty twenty four. So. We'll go from there. Public hearing scheduled for September seventeenth. Mr. Pastore, if I could leave this discussion again.
Thank you, Mayor Proton, Steve Pastor, Community Development. So based on my notes, there were five follow up items from our last discussion, so I wanted to briefly update the council on the applicant's response to those five, uh, five items. So I know Nicole had sent out a note earlier, so this is really just reviewing that, uh, what was sent out earlier. So the first was there was a concern about parking on thirty eight hundred South and nineteen fifty West and the 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 preference to potentially prohibit parking. So, uh, the applicant, their responses in their, in their design, they had units facing thirty eight hundred West and then also a few units facing nineteen fifty West. Uh, and they did that intentionally, so the development wasn't ever closed in on itself. So their preference would be to maintain parking on those streets. Uh, now they're not counting those in their parking calculations, they still would meet the minimum parking without that, but with that said, they realize that there are city streets that are existing and that ultimately it's the city's decision, so their preference would be to keep them open, but they understand the city has the ability to restrict that. Uh, the next, uh, comment was on nineteen fifty West. Um, right now the access is more towards the north into the line of the school. The question there was, can we can we, uh, shift that so it's more mid-block? And in talking with Public Works and the applicant, they're both amenable to that change, so that is something that can be done. Uh, on snow removal, there was just concern about where to put that. Um, kind of how I mentioned before, to to some degree, this is, well, I'd say to a large degree, this is our ordinance and that we're requiring more parking, and so that's how, how to accomplish that. The applicant's, uh, suggestion was to use some of the open areas, like some of the open space areas for snow storage. Or potentially some of the parking islands that exist in the plan. Uh, from Public Works, I mean, their, their preference ultimately would be not to have parking on the street, but again, we, we require more parking, so I'm not sure how else to do that. Uh, or having, uh, places maybe at the end of roadways for, for snow, so some different options there. Um, there is also the question about can, can the HOA limit the number of rental or the percentage of rental units in the development? So in talking with the applicant, they mentioned that, um, in a condo type scenario, FHA recommends a thirty percent, meaning no more than thirty percent. And so in their proposal, they're suggesting that uh, in their C C N Rs, they would have a, a cap of no more than thirty percent of all of the units, not just the condos, but all of the units would be subject to that thirty percent. Um, in my time here, I don't think we've ever done that before, so, um, that's a, that'd be a first, which again, I think from my perspective, I'm grateful the applicant was willing to, to make that commitment. The other thing I would say is that they indicated they are, um, they are a four cell, uh, developer, uh, or a four cell home builder. And they do not, um, hold on units to turn around and rent them. So we have had in, in some cases where a developer will build units. And then if the, the economy is maybe not doing great at the time, they'll hang on to those and rent them out, and they've said, we, we just don't do that. So those are a couple, a couple of things, uh, that they would be willing to commit to. Finally, there was a question about increasing the, the size of the, the single family lots along the west edge of the property, as well as including some three car garages. So the comment there was they could do, um, they're proposing that twenty percent or three of the lots would have a, a three car garage, uh, but that they would like to keep the number of lots they have along that side as, as proposed. Um, and so that, that, uh, leaves it on all five points, but I'm happy to answer any question you might have.
Just thought it came to me. If they're facing thirty eight. Then we put resident only parking signs out.
So with it being a
Kind of guarantee at least one parking spot for the
I don't know that we've done that before, and that may be something I could talk with our legal department on. Generally speaking, if we allow parking on a street, the, the kind of restrictions we might have would be, uh, like an hours limitation. But, but not typically, it's restricted to just certain people. It's, it's more open to anyone, but, um, they would all be subject to the same restriction, but it's, it's a question I can ask. Yes.
Just thinking, I've seen it in other places. And I know there are a lot of cars parked along there now. But because it's free and open parking.
Yeah, it's, there's already quite a bit of, uh, parking around thirty eight hundred just from, I think, likely from the apartments to the south.
Any other questions?
Uh, how do they enforce the thirty percent or something?
Yeah, that's a good question. I can, I can follow up with them on that. Ultimately, it would be the, it would be the HOA's responsibility, so the city actually can't enforce that. Um, so that the idea would be that they were, you're committing to put that in their C C N Rs and then the HOA would be responsible. And then maybe get a little bit more clarity on in the past, how HOAs have handled that before. So I'm not, yeah, I'm not sure what mechanisms they have in place for enforcement.
Then a question that probably my colleagues know, but as the rookie, I'm wondering, um, so this builder has a reputation, and I think we've all heard comments about that reputation. Can you just high level talk about this safety standards? When a new home is inspected and there's, there's requirements that have to be met over every development.
Absolutely. So first of all, the, the, the issue that I'm aware of with, with Edge was actually in a development where there was significant slope issues. Um, I actually spoke with the, uh, lives of the mayor about this. Fortunately, in this case, this site is about as flat as they come. And so, uh, we don't have a real slope issue, but, but just generally speaking, uh, with, with any new construction, there are multiple, so, so first of all, we review the plans and make sure they comply with code. And then there are multiple inspections throughout the construction that are done by city inspectors. What we're looking at, uh, foundation setbacks, electrical plumbing, pretty much from the ground up, or doing inspections to make sure that only the, the plans comply with the construction. And again, in that situation, and again, I don't, I don't know the, the real details, but it was likely, I think, uh, probably a soils issue potentially, where again, here where there's just no slope, we just don't have that, that same kind of concern, concern, but we do still, because they're proposing, um, basements here, we could do a, a geotech study where we would look at like groundwater and other soil conditions.
Yeah, I have a couple concerns I have, Steve. The first one is, uh, across the street, you know, thirty eight hundred south at the traffic light. And, uh, east side of Redwood Road. I just heard the seller is gonna sell that, it's probably gonna be about twelve or fourteen acres. And not far from here to Cross Street. And my concern is this plan is so simple and very much just, uh, nothing there but amenities. And I'm concerned maybe there are no competition and no attractiveness. People that can come here and purchase a townhouse or condo. And, uh, gonna create a vacancy in that area, cost problem for homeless people. That's across the street. And also the one, um, future we want to do with our piece of property on thirty fire sale Redwood Road. That's gonna be another big piece of property for acres too. So that means three properties within not even a lot. And I'm gonna have about roughly five hundred units total, or maybe more than that, you know what I'm saying? And how are they gonna sell this with five hundred units, over five hundred units, and they have a very simple plan? And that might concern.
So maybe to hit on, try to address, uh, several of those. First of all, on, on amenities, um, so, so our code does require that the developer provide, um, uh, amenities that are commensurate with the size of the project. So, so basically the way our code works is the, the bigger the project, the more, or meaning the more units they have, the more amenities you have to have. They actually exceed our code in terms of the amenities they're providing, so things like the clubhouse, the pool, uh, other amenity areas. So, so they do, in terms of the code at least, they're, they're exceeding our code requirements on the amenities front. Um, the, I think, which probably you're referring to on the east side of Redwood is the stock components or stock building. It's the former trust manufacturer, so I did notice that's on the market. That is actually, so you may recall a few months ago, uh, we, we chatted with the council about different properties up and down Redwood Road. That was one we talked about. And at the time, the council's preference was actually for more like townhome type product on, on that parcel as well. As far as just, uh, number of units, meaning, you know, between this property and other properties, I would suggest that there's definitely a demand. I mean, there's, we have a, just regionally, there's a, a shortage of housing generally, so um, as, as, as units are getting built, they're getting occupied, so I, I, I don't, I don't think we'll have a problem filling units uh, in terms of just number of units being built.
Uh, you think she made it really high, it's not overbuilt, because I, I kinda, I like, uh, the A I, they have very good amenities. And as, uh, at least if the customers is something they can take a look at, you know what I'm saying? But here, very simple. Basically, all the townhouses and swimming pools and stuff. But over the A I, they have, uh, attractive, you know, uh, very nice and very fun, but not for adults, but also for kids. So I think people want to go there, but here, see, not even for one block away, just only across the street. And that this location, the three hundred units, and the other one is the cross street gonna be about over hundred units. And they're gonna be nearby culture center are gonna be over a hundred units, you know, um. That's my concern. Gonna get something real attractive. And, uh, because I don't want to create a vacancy here and homeless people already have a problem here in, in my district. District number one is, has a lot of problem. Most people. You see that, uh, the stores behind the, uh, hours. Not, so not far from this property, you're gonna map adjacent to that, north. Homeless people that live behind that stores. And, uh, at night it came out. They try to get the money from change now, orders from that machine, those, those things. Police, uh, police officer, I think, worked very hard in that area, but this, uh, they there a lot of time, they police not over. They gone, and then the next day they back in that store, behind that stores. Uh, and that's a cost problem. It's adjacent to this property. Sort of my concern too.
Understood. Just a couple of things I would add. So if, if we end up getting townhomes on the east side of the street, they would be required to have their own amenities, uh, like this project. Um, and then in terms of just the transit issue, the property right now is, is really kind of used intermittently, right? We have particularly in the winter months, it's really just a swap meet, then, then during the rest of the week, it's, it's not, um, because the swap meet is just on the weekends. So just in my view, having the property developed and having more households on the property kind of puts more eyes on the street, and I think i- you're less likely to have transit issues on this property where you have actual housing on it. And, and people there like twenty-four, seven versus right now, the youth is just, again, intermittent, just given the nature of the swap meet and the driving.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm against it though. The plan, the project, they, they created it's up to us, but I'm, I'm thinking that's my concern, because I know we put nine people in there, we have a house in there, and we can have collecting taxes and stuff. And more rooftops for our business on Redwood Road as support, but kind of I tried to I do the right one. I mean, I, I don't know, try to get the right units in there. We, we don't wanna kind of like shovel in and then judge, oh, yeah, it's done, and yeah, but twenty years later, ten years later, it will, will cause a problem or something, that's, that's my concern, but you know, the plan, we need to have that, we need to have people go there and build houses, understand that. That my concern. Maybe I talk too much.
Do you have a, an ideal housing ratio or a mix of different kind of housing that you would prefer to see here, or certain amenities that you don't see here that you would like?
It's very simple. I mean, very simple, just nothing, the all houses, all units, and it doesn't have the bore, swimming pool in the middle. They have some kind of creative, somehow, some way they do something like the A I over there is so nice. You know, uh, attractive so much, so, you know, so many people, yeah. And, uh, that one is so simple here, and across the street, you can have one hundred, over hundred units for fourteen acres. Culture center not far from there, over hundred units, not even one block. And that's I'm concerned, yeah.
Any other questions? Scott, Mayor, do you have anything?
I just thank you, if you can hear me okay. I still have a concern about um, any new development, um, with the challenge we have with Treasure Isle, so, and I've heard, um, anything to alleviate that at this point, so that, that's where I'm at. And that's, that's as far as this turning into, um, a boarding house issue where we have new units that are with basements that are turned into boarding house units, so. And that's really hard for me to say as a real estate guy, but.
I think the C C R's in the, uh, homeowners association should do something with that, shouldn't it, Mr. Pastore?
Right, that would, that would be something that would be, um, included in the C C N Rs, but again, it'd be up to the HOA to, to enforce that.
But again, question comes up, how do they enforce it? Mayor, anything?
Yes, I would still like as a city to put no parking on thirty eight and nineteen fifty. Part of their argument was they're, they want to be part of the neighborhood across the street, but they're not gonna look like them. I would rather have the three car garages on the single family homes as well, and those streets are those lots wider. Because I just think there, it's gonna be parking all over the place.
Hey. Yeah, I'm, I'm also worried about those single family homes and the parking there on, on nineteen fifty. Even if we say no parking on nineteen fifty, then, then it's just gonna be into the neighborhood where people will park. And, uh, and now we're saying to those residents who who have been parking on the street without causing problems. And now they can't. And I think those lots need to be bigger for single family homes.
And my main objection to not having parking, or my main reason for not having parking on thirty eight hundred, is because now you're gonna have residents along there instead of commercial. And kids playing in those yards, and it's just a different use of that street front.
Yeah, maybe to, just to that, to that point, again, I think the, the city's one hundred percent control on that issue, we, we could put up no parking signs tomorrow if we want, so we can, we can make that decision completely independent of this project, whether we want to restrict parking or not.
But even then, it's not a complete solution, just because now we're making our, on nineteen fifty, on thirty eight, that makes sense. But on nineteen fifty houses that close together, they're gonna need more parking than than their driveway provides. And the only place to go is into the neighborhood. And I don't, I don't think that's a burden that the neighborhood should bear.
But the law, that area again, for the house, put the law sign again.
Yeah, so these would be, and talking to the, the developer about five thousand square feet roughly.
Uh, not necessarily small. And the width is about fifty feet?
In some cases wider, but yeah, the smallest would be around fifty.
Don't we have ordinances that require longer width or?
Yeah, so it, so yes, uh, yeah, but in this case, we're doing a P U D, there's, you can basically do, um, you propose any kind of a width as part of the P U D. But in just a standard subdivision, yes, we would have a, a minimum like frontage of like an eighty foot frontage, for example.
It's like our one acres.
Correct, right.
Yeah, I think I'm with Lars and the mayor. Relation to thirty eight west. Sorry, stop.
Anything else?
No, we like to work with them, but then they need to cover up the better plan a bit. Food brainers.
So my, for my benefit for next week, uh, we, we had the initial development, and if it was in your packet, um, we can incorporate the items that the developer committed to in this, in, in an updated version of the development agreement. And then I can convey the council's late, again, concerns reiterated today to see if they're wanting to make any further changes, but at this point, my thought would be is we'll make the changes they've committed to and see if they're willing to do any other changes, and then we'll have that agreement ready for the council's consideration next week.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Question for Nicole, just got an invitation by email. Are we having one tonight?
Yes.
Although we can make it by that time. Communications. Mr. Johnson. He get to talk to us about homeless task.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Hello, council. Um, today I wanted to talk a little bit, we had the question come up about our homeless task force. Um, I believe all of you are familiar with it, but just to give you a little background, it started about eight years ago. Um, that was when we had our first meeting to talk about the challenges that, um, and opportunities that the homeless situation in West Valley City provides our city. So we have been getting together, and this is a list of people that are at every meeting or come to different meetings that we do weekly. We do these meetings weekly. I think all of you have been member, have come to one of these meetings at one point. It's quite a list of, uh, different departments and how they're all working together, which is something that I've never seen to this extent for this long of a time. Um, you have some great opportunities where if it's a parks issue, police is working closely. Uh, Public Works is working closely with them to get some of these situations resolved. We have had over the past year or two, as you may have noticed, we had a temporary homeless shelter, which has become not so temporary. Uh, it is expected to finish in the spring of next year, but we have added, uh, nearly three hundred people to uh, our homeless community that are coming. One thing I want to do note of this task force is if you look at the bottom of the, the list, the outside agency, we have a, a woman who runs the switch point facility, the homeless, the homeless facility there on Redwood Road. She comes to every single one of the meetings and she's constantly talking to us about some challenges that they have, but often it becomes voice of appreciation for the great work that the city is doing and specifically fire and police. You can see we have an extensive list of police that come to these meetings. Our current, uh, situation day to day is we have two shifts of two officers each that spend their time entirely at the homeless shelter. Um, COP also has a business unit that goes out and meets with the businesses along with our economic development, Nate Webster, meeting with our businesses weekly to talk about some of the challenges that they face. So we have a, a very good relationship, especially with those businesses that are in that close proximity. When they have issues, they reach out to Nate or they reach out to our police department to get those resolved quickly. It's a lot of homeless people. We are spending right now, um, we're looking at some of the numbers, but just in police overtime, uh, around $700,000 a year in, in hard costs. That goes with hundreds of thousands of dollars that our fire department puts into it and other departments. So it's, it's an exciting challenge. And if you go, let's go to the other slide, Travis. These are some of the, the things that have been accomplished over the past eight years that I think we're all very proud of as a city. Some of the things to notice is, um, providing resources and helping our homeless population find resources. And that is everything from the mental health court, getting them into a program where they can find a track to be able to become contributing members of our community and get the help they need. We have, uh, there's a new facility out in Sandy. It's called the MVP facility. It's the medically vulnerable program. This is for people that are, are past veterans that are older in age as well, that we've helped through police, through, through fire and through switch point in helping them find a, a more stable location there in Sandy where they can go. The challenges, as you would guess with this shelter is we have 300 homeless people that are there every night and every day, spending time in our community. I think our police department has been so active in working with them and, and directing them into positive situations in our community, uh, working with switch point to get them, um, the help that they need along with fire. It's really been a team effort where there's been so many successes, but there are some challenges. And I think we see that along Redwood Road and 35th. Um, that's always been kind of a challenge in the past. It's become more so when you add that kind of number to it. The, some of the other things that have been, that have been happening, when we have an incident at a park, if we have any kind of, uh, situation where there's possibly someone that's being belligerent or drunk there among families and all that, parks has been fantastic in reaching out to police and police are great within minutes arriving there to, to work with the homeless person and getting them the help they need or helping them move along to, uh, a different situation. So, uh, the thing I am truly proud of to see that this task force has, has done is working together to really provide some solutions for our homeless. Our situation with all of its challenges, it's pretty amazing when you go up and down, uh, the Jordan River where you will see camps literally on one side of the river and on our side, no camps. That is something that, um, it is rare for us to have a camp in the city. And the minute that that happens, police is there, fire is there as needed and public works is there to get it cleaned up and to direct our, our, those that were using that camp to a safer resource, whether it's another homeless facility or to some of the resource programs that are evolved, that are available throughout the county. Excuse me. So it's, we, we often hear, our police often hear, um, some of the homeless people say to them that, uh, they don't typically come to West Valley City because they know they're going to be directed to resources instead of just letting them live on the Jordan River or be able to put a camp on a major street. They're not allowed to do that in West Valley City and, and they are aware of that. And so a lot of times they are coming through West Valley City to go to another city that is a little more lax and letting them, uh, camp out on the street. So there, there are a lot of wins, but there are challenges. So that's kind of a, a quick overview. We meet every week to talk about the homeless shelter specifically, that Redwood Road and 35th. But then we talk about the parks, we talk about other places in West Valley City that have some of those challenges. And then we come up with a plan as a team on how we can address those challenges and be able to, to, um, have a successful program in helping them find the resources that they need. So that is kind of a short presentation, but if there are any questions from any of you on it, I would love to discuss it.
Yeah, I do want to share with that video I just sent over to you guys. Can you put it on?
Sure. Travis, let's pull that video. Tom sent us a video this morning that he, uh, wanted to share with all of council. So we can show that.
I'm here, uh, on behalf of 40 million Californians that are fed up. I'm here, uh, because I'm one of them. Uh, I want to see results. I don't want to read about them. I don't want to see the data. I want to see it by believing it, by seeing people that are back up on their feet and to get those streets, uh, clean, get those tents off the streets, the encampments off the streets, uh, and begin once again to feel pride about our state. This is not about criminalization. What's criminal is neglecting people that are struggling and suffering and die on our watch. That's criminal. What's criminal is people don't have restaurants. What's criminal is people literally putting their lives at risk every single night. We're done with the excuses. And the last big excuse was, well, the courts are saying we can't do anything. Well, that's no longer the case. So we had a simple executive order. Do your job. There's no more excuses. You got the money, you got the flexibility, you got the green light, you got the support from the state and the public is demanding of you.
Home Depot is left scrambling as shop.
Where is that gadget? We gotta, right after council meeting, we'll head to Home Depot. Tom, did you have any further questions on that?
You know, I'm grateful for you guys doing this, the wonderful thing to do, you know, and it's a program you said so for years and it's a wonderful for our city and I, I'm grateful for that. You know, the program you guys run is pretty good. The, uh, homeless shelter on, I mean, and Redwood Road right there, yeah. Liquor store. I, uh, first I was worried about that, but I, I, I think they do a wonderful job. It's great. And, uh, you guys, uh, walking in, uh, Jordan River. I, I, I went there before with the police officers and I know kind of the village out there, but not, not anymore. So it's a great.
Okay.
But today is a, it is a challenge we have. The challenge we have right now is homeless people, they go into our neighborhood, our house and our businesses. That's a problem. For example, a King Point area, one of the resident did close their garage. You know, usually you just normal, you just push the button and you walk inside the house. You don't look at it. The homeless guy went inside the garage, staying there overnight. And if the owner opened the door in the morning, go to work and saw the guy, wow, it's shocking. I was scared. That King Point area. 35th and Redwood Road is a main business. It's a lot of businesses in that area. And our homeless people, they wander around there. They live there, they wander around there. That's who caused a problem for customers. They go there to buy stuff or have lunch or dinner. They don't want to go there, but they wander inside the parking lot in front of the, their business. And then we call the police, the police, and then they come out, they see the point right there, and then they come back again. They live not far from there and our police officer clean it up. Next day, they are again. It's not like Jordan River anymore. They come to our town, our homes and our businesses. That's at the new challenge we have and how we're going to deal with that. That's my question. Not in the village, in the river anymore. Right here, ladies, she tried to close the garage, walk in the door, went inside the house. That's very normal. They don't look the garage down, touch the floor. Homeless people got him.
Yeah.
Scared them.
No, you're right, Tom. It is a, it is a different, it is a definite challenge. I think with the South Salt Lake Shelter that is right on our border as well, where you have hundreds more that will often come to our city. There, there can be definite challenges. And I think, uh, I'm appreciative of the police efforts and economic development who works closely with those businesses just so we can stay on top of it. But there is a, a lot of work that we, uh, will continue to do. We've had this shelter now for a year, um, and we'll have it through what we're being told through spring or May, I mean, through, uh, uh, March, April, May range. Um, but they are aware of the challenges and, 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 and police will continue to do it and get the calls and follow up immediately. But yes, there are a lot of challenges, no doubt, in our neighborhoods.
I just wonder how we can, I don't know, you guys, maybe consider, try to figure out how to tackle them. So they don't, we don't lose our businesses. We don't scare people. You know? That's my concern.
Thank you, Sam.
The handful of meetings that I've joined, um, I, I mean, I just appreciate the collaboration that takes place. Everybody that's on that call has input on their area of responsibility. Nobody's quiet except for me, just sitting and listening. But, um, I, I appreciate the collaboration and the effort that the team's putting in.
Thank you. And, and this is kind of an open invite as, as usual to our council. If you are interested in attending one of the Thursday meetings, please reach out to me, Steve Pastrick, any of the team, and we can get you added on to it so you can, and attend one of those meetings in the future. Or ride along with police, which I know they love giving.
Hey, anything else?
What does the task force need from us to bolster the great work that's already happening? But how do, what are the requests of the council in terms of strengthening or augmenting what's already been?
Thank you, Jake, for that question. That's, that's a good question. That's something that I think we should talk as a, as a team. That's something that we'll definitely bring up. We are thankful for the support that we have gone from council. I know we've done these meetings or these presentations over the last eight years here and there, and we've always felt that support. So thank you. Um, we can talk about it and see if there's other thoughts that we can come to you with. I think seeing you being part of those meetings and, and as Tom did, give us some of the challenges that you're seeing out there, bring some awareness to us and things that we can focus on as well. Um, we, we try to put a lot of effort into the businesses, but hearing Tom talk about it, that's something that I think we can continue to, to look at and see how we can strengthen them in, in different ways than what we're doing right now. But thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Callan, any question? We do have a need for a closed session tonight to cover pending litigation, disposition of real property, deployment of security. There's only a couple of comments we could have other than those. So we're covering the whole gamut. So need a motion for that.
I move that we go into a closed session for the meetings that you, the reasons that you stated and that following the closed session, we adjourn without any more business. Okay.
Second.
Councilman Pity Smono?
Hi.
Councilman Whitstone?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Christensen?
Yes.
Motion Pasadena?
Okay. I'm going to the closed session and let's give us a five minute break and get back as soon as possible so we can not keep all of our people waiting.